Noting the time and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee to order. I would first of all like to say that we are being taped. This is not being broadcast live. The tape will be shared probably Monday or Tuesday on the, on Acton TV. We're waiting till we do both interviews and everything before we go ahead.
I'd like to request that they also be sent to Boxboro for it to go on the Boxboro TV.
Yes, I will make a note of that. Thank you. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Anthony Parker. He's here tonight to meet with us.
Good evening.
Go ahead, you can start with your, whatever you want to say in the beginning and then we'll go around and answer.
To the folks who I haven't met on the school committee, thank you for having me. It's my pleasure to be here. And I look forward to answering your questions and as straightforwardly as I can. I've had a lovely day here in your community, getting to know some of your stakeholders and some of the students. I had a real good meeting with them at the high school. And I would be honored if you saw fit to give me the nod for this position. But, you know, again, I'm going to keep this short. It has been a long day and I want to make sure I answer your questions as clearly and coherently as possible. And so, thank you for having me.
Okay, we'll start with the first question and I think Mary has that.
Yes. So Anthony, from your standpoint of your own career, what would be the three most important accomplishments you believe you've made as an educator?
Well, I'll start with my career in Weston. Helping to build programs to better support students so that they could experience excellence in ways that make sense to them. And being able to do that in very concrete ways and programs that 12 years ago didn't exist in Weston. Because I think we're serving more kids and we're serving more kids well. So I'm proud of that. I'm proud of, well, now that's... After 25 years, I have to really think about that, you know. I'm proud of the way our community came together to support a new program that I've talked to some of you about at the high school called June Academy. Where we thought differently about the curriculum and about the ways students could experience school. You know, and learn and have a voice in what they're learning. Last, my role as an educator. I'm proud of those moments when students can come back to me and say that I actually made a difference for them. Because you don't always know that in real time. Particularly students you may have struggled with or families you may have struggled with when they can come back and say, "Thank you." Those are proud, those are proud moments for me.
So Anthony, I understand you've had a good part of the day to visit the district, kick the tires, check under the hood. What, what do you see as one or two challenges going forward that, that you would focus on if you were appointed superintendent?
Well, one of the challenges that was brought up to me by elementary teachers was school choice. School choice, you know, do we continue to operate school choice regarding elementary as it is and has been for a long time? Or do we think differently about it? And that was something that was clearly identified to me. There was some feeling that, there were some pros and cons there about, you know, how that process impacts kids, you know, in the community. So, that was one clear thing that came out. Most of my conversations though beyond that, there was some indication that morale might be low among certain segments of the teaching community. And I, you know, you know, questioned that, you know, and say, "What was the roots, causes of that?" And has any, you know, surveys been done or data collected, you know, and asked specific questions getting to that feeling? And how widespread is it? Is it? Okay? But what does it mean? What does, what does it mean? You know, and so collecting data on that. And then the issue of diversity came up, you know, how can we get more teachers and administrators of color in the district? You know, mainly teachers of color in the district to come and to stay. So those are things that were identified clearly, you know, to me as concerns, so.
If you would have anything kind of a follow-up question, feel free to pop in and, you know, I'm sorry, I didn't say that at the beginning. I just assumed with this group you would be popping in, but...
So I will pop in then, thank you. I wonder, do you foresee any challenges related to being a superintendent of a region? Given the experience that you have that hasn't been regional?
The challenge is going to be, you know, I have to double down on building relationships in both communities. Because that's where it starts. All right, I'm going to have to spend time in both communities. Making sure that I'm hearing from stakeholders in both communities on a regular basis. That has to be part of what people expect of me and I need to follow through with that, you know. You know, how much time you spend in a community shows whether or not you value them. It's one of the factors, you know, do you spend time here? Did you come here to our house? And that's something that I would commit to do, particularly because we have two towns, two sets of politics, two cultures. Maybe have similar expectations, maybe you don't. But being seen and being heard and being explicit about learning both communities. And being open to both communities. And so that's, that's the challenge and, but that's, that would be my number one priority, you know. As a new person coming into, not one new culture, but two new cultures. And that takes time and that takes, you have to be very deliberate about it. Not impossible, but you have to realize that a priority would be to invest time in being in both communities. To hearing from them.
Okay, Anthony, so how would you foster meaningful, inclusive learning environments and opportunities for students in the high needs category as well as all students?
Well, so I'm going to ask you to repeat, can you repeat that one more time?
Sure. How would you foster meaningful, inclusive learning environments and opportunities for students in the high needs categories as well as for all students?
Programming, right? Programming and practices. Working with teachers and professional development about how we do that, you know. And articulating those expectations that that is a priority. That the goal, we want inclusive classrooms, we want, and programming. What are we missing that doesn't allow us to foster that? And then create them and put them in place, right? So that kids could actually experience it. And one of the things that we're talking about in Weston is, okay, how can we practically do that? We need training on how to do that, right? And to provide that. And so, training and then programming and setting the expectations that this is a goal and a value of the community. Those are the three things, you know. And if you're prioritizing it, not just in your program development, but in your budget, in your budget. Foster those areas where it already exists and then where there are gaps. And if this is a value and a priority for this community, and I believe it should be, providing the training for teachers, setting the expectations that this is good for all kids, not just kids with high needs. Because we don't lower our expectations because you have more needs than the others, you know. How can we get you to a place where you can experience excellence in ways that make sense to you? Programming, expectations, budget, and training.
So can you give us some examples of how you have dealt with this challenge in Weston? Either in terms of the types of programming that you've seen come through in your tenure or budget decisions that you've made that have supported programs like this?
Sure. The enrichment center. It was an Academica, regular education academic support center. Okay, that now is about 10 years old. So I was new, I'd been in the position a few years and that this was a need. And so we, we used some money for, from our funds that the district had, you know. And so, $50,000 budget and we prioritized it and made it happen. And took over a space, hired a person to help create the program. You know, and to help the faculty build a vision about how we want to use this in conjunction with teachers so that more kids can get support to help them excel. So that's number one. Number two, some of the other student support programs which allow kids to flourish. Our transitions program, our bridge program that we put in place for students on IEPs, students with social and emotional needs, getting extra support to help you flourish in the classroom. And it wasn't just me, okay? It was a collaborative effort. You know, so it was getting people on board to share the need, see that this is a need and we could better serve all of our students well. So those are several programs that over the years we've put in place, right?
What about all those very, have the very high achieve, achievement students?
Well, the same thing, basically, you know, how can we serve, serve them better, offering them experiences where they can feel that they are excelling, you know? And so we've added honors and AP courses to our curriculum. We worked with the edX collaborative, students can take courses online that's not offered in the high school for enrichment purposes, you know, so, and allowing for certain academic experiences outside of the school where they want to challenge themselves and, you know, giving credit to those programs, high school credit, you know, for approved programs at other colleges or universities that they, you know, they tapped out our curriculum and they want to do more. And so, allowing them opportunities for them to do that, to do that. And so we've added to our curriculum over the years. We, we have an online, we had students participate in online classes, you know. And we've also helped students with independent, you know, giving credit for independent studies. Or they wanted to take on additional academic challenges and create a program working with another institution. They've worked with us and we've supported them in that.
Thank you very much. One of the greatest desires expressed by all our stakeholder groups was that our next superintendent be an excellent communicator. What does that mean to you?
Communicating with them, giving people an opportunity to talk to me and they can hear from me directly. Whether that's by, you know, letter or email. Personally, I prefer face-to-face and providing opportunities where they can see me and talk to me. Formally or informally. You know, and keeping them abreast of what's happening in the district on a regular basis. Whether that's a memo, a regular memo that goes out and again forums in the community. Where sometimes I may bring an agenda, other times my agenda is just to hear from you. What do you want to talk about? So I will communicate by any means, all means necessary, you know, that we have at our disposal. But my primary mode is to actually be present, you know, give people an opportunity so where we can be face-to-face and talk. But email, memo, and having, you know, people coming in to see me. Making appointment to come talk to me, you know, so all of the above. Communicating is just letting them know what we're doing, why we're doing it, giving people an opportunity to hear from me directly about issues concerning the schools and their children, their children. No, I wanted to make sure that I answer a question or there's something, okay.
I would just like you to expand on that. So I, I can hear that for community members. What about stakeholders within the district? So your central office, leadership team, your teachers, that kind of thing. How do you see communication with them?
The same way. Teachers were very clear throughout the day that they would want a superintendent that was visible and present. They asked me, "How will we get to know you?" By being present, right? And communicating with them and giving them opportunities for me to come to their house and for them to share with me on a regular basis. And that's something that I've observed firsthand with all of my superintendents where they give teachers the opportunity to do that in all the buildings on a regular basis. And sometimes a lot of teachers or staff members show up, sometimes very few, but they have the opportunity to do that. Right? And so what I said for the wider community is doubly true for the school community, the teachers and the staff and the students, and the students. Being in the buildings, the students were very clear, past superintendent says, "I didn't know who he was." You know, and so clearly that's a priority, you know, to be visible and talk to them, be in classrooms.
So just to go a little bit more into detail with that, I mean, we have 5,200 students, 1,000 faculty. How, how do you see yourself being able to balance all the interaction that you've discussed and the other roles required by a superintendent?
Well, as I said to some of the faculty members today, there may be moments where, you know, I can't do what I want to do to be out and about, you know, as much because of other responsibilities of the office. But one of the ways that I can at least get at that is to, you know, have things regularly scheduled, you know, in the calendar and, you know, in certain intervals. So this is not ad hoc, you know, but you know that at least once a month I'm going to be, you know, in two buildings, right? And, you know, this month is going to be this building and this building. You know, that month is going to be that building and the other building. And so if you want to make it a regular practice so that you don't forget about it, it doesn't fall off, you have to be intentional and you have to schedule it, you know. And if you have to cancel or you have to rearrange something because of other responsibilities, okay, but, you know, you're changing it because something else needs to happen or take place. But it was there, right? And to give that, and so, you know, you'd have to look at, as you said, you know, a lot of people. You know, so what makes sense and what is actually doable, all right? Determine what's doable and then do it. Schedule it and then make it a regular practice.
First of all, thanks for coming today and spending the day in the district. It's, it's a long day, I would imagine, although I didn't spend the whole day with you. I did get a chance to spend before some time. But it's a lot of work, but it's very important to us. It's extremely important to the community, so we appreciate your effort. Well, one of the questions that came up before in the, in the community forum is you'd be walking, you would be walking into a district with pretty much a $90 million budget. Eight buildings, nine buildings, 847,000 square feet space. And so my question is, how are you going to approach the budget process? What's your take on it and how do you think you'd drive it? And then conversely, you got to sell it. And not only that, but we've got a possible building project for, you know, someone that could be around 120 million depending on how, how it shakes out with MSBA. And you have to sell that not only to the school committee but to, to communities. So what's going to be your process around those particular things? The budget? And then, you know, coming up with the budget and then selling it?
Starting with the budget, to look at what has been done and it has been the process heretofore, you know. And working with my principals and my finance team and the central office team to help prioritize what's important, right? And so, because, you know, I'm coming into a process that already exists, so what has been that process, all right? And so I would imagine in the first year I would not change that process. But I have conversations with the school committee, members of the finance committee about, okay, what's working, you know, and what's not working. So let me answer those two questions, all right? And in terms of, and then prioritizing what do we think is in the best interest of kids, all right? The budget needs to be, you know, programming that helps better support what we do here with kids, right? That's what drives our budget priorities, right? And that includes the building project, right? Buildings have, if your buildings are old and they're, you know, they're not, they're failing our kids and our staff because they're not modernized, you know, start with that. This building process is going to be good for kids and then who do we need at the table, you know, to help, you know, make a decision about what we do need and then we sell that. And that's what we did in Weston for the field school and that's what we did with the science project that we did. This is good for kids, here's how we will benefit from this, all right? This is why this is a good investment by the community. And then we, we kept saying that again and again and again and again and we, you know, we had all the right people at the table who could speak to different aspects of a building project, you know. We went to other communities to see what they had done, what their process was, you know. Who do we need to talk to on the school committee and on FinCom and in the parent community? Who can help us sell this to the community, you know? Get advocates and allies, you know, who can help you deliver the message to the community about this is why we have to spend this money. And that's what we did, you know, and, you know, I had, you know, I'm part of a team, you know, admin council team where we have to examine all of the schools budgets as we prioritize our district initiatives, you know. And do we really need this at this time, you know, in our budget or are we going to go in a different direction? You know, but that's a conversation to be had with the leadership team, you know, to look at school budgets and as well as what are the district priorities. And, you know, you know, if I were to come here, you know, I would be a major part of any effort to sell this. And what I have to go on is what we've done in Weston to sell it, to sell building projects. Field school, that's our fourth and fifth grade school, right? And I watched the school committee and the superintendent collaborate with key stakeholders in the parent community, all right? And experts, right, to help craft a message to the community about costs. This is what we're looking at, this is why we're doing it, this is what we anticipate the cost is. And this is why we feel you should support this, why this is good for kids and good for the community. And so what I'm saying is what I've witnessed done and it was successful in both, both times, both times.
I have a lot of questions, sorry. Do you have any experience with a long-term capital plan?
For, for a district, no. No, a long-term plan, I've been, you know, as it affects the high school, working with building and grounds and with finance and school committee, things we want to do in the building, in my building, but long-term, you know, I have not had direct experience with that. I have observed that experience. So that's something I would, you know, I would collaborate with other, where has that happened? Who has a capital plan? What did you do? What did you put in, into it? Who was at the table, the process? And then make sure that, you know, I did something that made sense for Acton-Boxboro. I do not think it's an amountable blind spot, but it's something I believe I could get up to speed with, right? And again, by having the right people at the table to help guide you and advise you.
I don't know exactly what is the budget, that number in Weston. But however, there are one thing I'm very certain is our... Yeah, there are one thing I'm very certain is our per student spending. definitely is a couple of thousand lower than average of a Weston student. So how do you judge this juggling, this kind of change and what could be your priority? You know, based on maybe lower kind of a spending to the student?
And so if I understand you, and I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty to hear you. So how do we justify the per this cost per student?
Per student spending, average student spending in this district is definitely lower than in Weston. So when you have budget, when you judge the budget process or you have some struggling playing those numbers, what could be, you know, your priority, priority or how do you think about this process?
Well, we're going through that now where, you know, school committee and FinCom saying, does our student, our cost per student need to be as high as it is, right? And are we getting, can we still achieve what we want to achieve with lower costs? That is a question that's being asked right now, right now. And the only thing I think, the only thing that can be said to that is, you know, can we look at efficiencies? Sure, we should always do that, that's just due diligence. But making sure that, you know, the outcomes that experiences we have for kids is not unduly affected. You know, I think we should always review our budget and look for places where, you know, if the cost per student needs to decrease, okay, all right, and then that's, that's some, we look at our programming, we look at where, who we have, you know, how do we reduce that, right? And, but in examining the budget and examining our programming, if we feel that now this is valid and we still need to continue this, you know, then we advocate for what the cost per student is. And so I just want to clarify, are you suggesting that, you know, it needs to be higher?
I'm just, no, I, I just want to hear from you. I don't know, I, the base is, the number is lower, but how do you use the lower dollars to do something with the school?
Just make, making sure that what we offer is, you know, that we're spending our money wisely on what we're offering students in, in the district, you know, that, you know, can we justify that this is what the number should be or that it should be higher because of what we feel we want to do for students? And working with the finance team to break the numbers apart and say, how did we get to this figure? You know? And is this number allowing us to do what's best for students, you know, what we want to do for them? Hi Katie.
One of our greatest challenges is promoting work-life balance, especially as performance expectations have increased for both students and staff. What do you see as your role in continuing our work in this area?
Promoting it, making sure we don't lose sight of it, right? And making sure that, you know, we're making choices about where, you know, about what we're offering and what we're doing to maintain a healthy work-life balance, right? You have to be very intentional because you can do it for a little bit, do something here, do something there and then, you know, lose sight of it. And so we have to talk about it and make sure that it's a priority and a goal and make sure that in each building, each level, we're actually doing things that helps promote it and not detract from it.
Is there something you've done in Weston specifically at the school where you've promoted work-life balance?
Let's see. For the students, for the students, no homework weekends, right? No homework on breaks or holidays or special projects, right? So don't have assignments due the first day a student is back from vacation, you know? So no homework, no major projects or assignments. Looking at how we can reduce the amount of time kids spend on homework without sacrificing learning, you know? Little nips and tucks, you know, little nips and tucks. Trying to think of other things, you know? You know, for students, it's workload, it's workload, you know? So, you know, that's the assignments that we give. That's where it comes in, you know? So what are we expecting them to do, not only when they're here, but when they're not here, right? And so that's homework, that's special projects, you know? How many assessments do we, do we need to be giving? You know, can we lessen the number of assessments that students have to take or projects, you know, to study for, to work for? And also we've talked about, you know, should be an open question, should we, I don't know how it is in AB, but we've talked about limiting the number of APR honors classes students should take. We haven't made any decisions on that, but that's an ongoing conversation, right? You know, and what the impact would be in the community. So unofficially we do that, you know, with our counselors and we have conversations with parents. But some of the leading opponents to that are the students themselves, actually. You still feel they have to take, you know, a lot of upper-level courses at one time, right? And so, but we're actively thinking, should that be something we do concretely? You know, to actually say you cannot take more than, you know, a certain amount of upper-level courses.
As a follow-up to that, would you say that you've achieved buy-in in terms of the reduction of the workload or making workloads more manageable within, among the staff? Would you say that you're beginning this initiative or have accomplished it to a great extent at, in your district or in Weston? And was it successful or?
It's ongoing, it's ongoing, all right? It's ongoing. And I remember I was sharing this story, let's say something simple like the no homework weekend. When I first broached that idea with the faculty, there was a clear division in the faculty, right? And and I remember that, that faculty meeting well and I was actually surprised by, you know, the tenor of the debate, you know? And and so it's an ongoing conversation, what can we do without sacrificing rigor? And, you know, just re-examining, okay, what exactly is rigor? All right, what is success? All right, when do you achieve it? By taking lots of courses or, you know, and, and it's a hard question, you know? Because, you know, if somebody feels they can do it, you know, we don't want to hold them back. You know, but on the other hand, overall, is it good for the health and well-being of, you know, our students? Right? Do we continue to have unofficial conversations or do we say, you know, we're just going to make a, a general decision? You know, you can't, you can only take certain amount of AP and honors courses in the course of a year, all right? And some members of the community would very much support that and other members would absolutely not, all right? And so that would, in our community, that would be, you know, a lot of communicating about that and the expectations, you know? So I won't say, we are in a different place now than we were in the past, all right? We're much more cognizant of it and we talk about it a lot more. And I do think, you know, overall, there is, there have been changes in our approach, right? And expectations set for students, you know? And it's something that we are conscious of as we move towards, you know, whether it's programming, whether it's assignments, why we're giving this assignment, do we need to, to give it? All right, or can we do something differently where we don't unduly burden the student?
Another follow-up to that, would you mind describing June Academy for those of us who are not familiar with it as a, as an innovation that you have led in Weston?
June Academy. And we started last year. It was an idea that came to me from the English and math department heads about how do we look at those last two weeks of the school year in June? When, you know, the seniors have graduated and we're just sort of killing time, right? And they said, Anthony, what if we've did something different and instead of doing a regular curriculum, you know, we offered a series of fun courses or different courses that kids really could buy into, right? It would entail, you know, moving the final exam schedule up and, you know, just what if? I liked the idea. You know, because as I said, you know, if a district like Weston can't do it, then it can't be done, you know? And we talked about, you know, we always talk about how can we do school differently? How can we make school more enjoyable for students? Because some students really do like school and other students, they know how to do school, as I said earlier, but they don't really enjoy it, right? And so we began a process of, I went to the curriculum cabinet, my curriculum leaders, and they liked it. And so we had, we offered a series of about eighty seminar-like courses. We did surveys, parents, teachers and students. So number one, it was an opportunity where students actually had skin in the game, right? Because, you know, when you get to high school, you have some choice, but not much, right? All right, and here students actually would have an opportunity to weigh in on what they would like to learn. They told us how they learned best, right? And what would make, what kind of a course, you know, would they like to actually learn about in school? And the thing about June Academy, the support from the parent community, support from the students, support from the teachers, it was across the board, you know? Some questions, you know, we have to plan it and do it well, but we did, right? And we unveiled June Academy and we offered courses from organic chemistry, things that are not offered in our regular curriculum. We offered fly fishing, we offered bike repair, we offered landmark Supreme Court cases, right? We offered how to manage a rock band, right? And that was the superintendent's course offering that one. We offered the economics of sports where kids went to Fenway and the Garden and Gillette and met with officials there who met and came down and spoke with them about, you know, the economics of sports in, in America. There's a course I've bandied about, but it was a fun course and it was led by a science teacher called Gardening for the Apocalypse. And how we look at, how do we garden, how, you know, grow food? The works of Jane Austen, right? And so it was, it ran the gamut, right? And I should say, teachers too, who had a passion could also teach something that was not necessarily something they were certified for, like an English teacher or, you know, a science. You could teach something totally out of your discipline, but you're an expert at it. And, you know, we had self-defense for girls and we brought Project Impact in and they worked with us. And we see our enrichment fund, educational enrichment fund, they gave us fifteen thousand dollars and I took money from each budget and all our professional time was given to teachers to develop courses and rubrics for their June Academy courses. And I think I may have said, if not, let me say it now, also students had the opportunity to co-teach a class with an adult as well. And for instance, in one of our film courses, a student helped lead that course and it went very well. And so Civil Rights Tour of Boston, you know, looking at Boston's civil rights history that one of our history teachers led as well. And so it was a range of things, but the beauty of this was, you know, kids had a say. So for instance, when we had the first round of courses, every student in advisory, you know, got to weigh in on that and say, no, this wouldn't work. Would you take this course? Would you take that course? And based on their feedback, we changed it up, right? We took some courses out. You know, maybe not this course, but something else, right? And then we actually made the change. So we had a committee, every department, a representative from every department. Our assistant superintendent for finance and operations was on the steering committee as well as assistant superintendent for teaching and learning. All right, and, and we piloted it last year. We were going into our second year and as I've shared with others throughout the day, Winchester High School is piloting their version this year, as is Concord Carla. They're piloting their version of June Academy this year as well, all right? And it was just thinking about how can we be creative and do school differently? You know, and get greater engagement, you know? There are problems, you know, we have to work out some kinks. But as we began this process, I said, there are problems and there are pros and problems to be solved, right? You know, and because of course there are questions, you know, can we afford the time? How do we make changes in the curriculum? Our kids are going to be hurt by it, but you know what? We did it, you know? Teachers are experts in the curriculum and you know what you can shorten and you know what you can take out and they did, right? But it was very important that they saw from me and from our school committee and the superintendent that they were behind this, right? And once teachers realized, oh, they're serious about this and administration at all levels is supporting them, all right? Then there was near complete buy-in, buy-in. And we did surveys after, did surveys after and we were very gratified by the student responses, student responses. And so when I think of ways to think about doing school differently, that's an example of what I mean, what I mean. And I certainly think that's something that could be done here in Acton Box Barrel, you know? And with the parent community, with the faculty and administrators, you know? So what if, you know, what if we thought about this differently? What if we tried this, right? You have the resources, you have the talent, right? You have an array of students with, you know, passions and interests that are not satisfied by what we offer in school necessarily, you know? Is there a way that, that we can, you know, bring that together here, right? And also we give them, we put it on their transcript, right? We put it on their transcript, June Academy, you know? Because admissions officers, you know, they're, they're going to see, you know, okay, you took AP Calculus, you took AP Physics, you took honors this, you took this, you did, you know? June Academy. What's that? Tell me about that, right? So, and also another benefit of that, it was another way of teachers connecting with kids who they might never have in their classroom. And so for students, you know, when it, this year when it came time for college, they not only went to teachers in the traditional courses, they also went to the, the teachers they had in their June Academy course who got to see them and experience them as learners in a different context. I think that's a good thing, a good thing.
So as you know, being a principal, just like being a superintendent, you ultimately have to make a decision and be the bad guy, right? On certain points and it doesn't, I was reading through your packet last night. It didn't seem that from anything that was in there that you're, that you shy away from that. So I'm curious on, one of the things that was pointed out was that you took on the conversation internally within your school regarding attendance rules. And it didn't sound- And it didn't sound like it was a pleasant conversation for a number of people. So I want to know if you can just walk us through your process and how, what the issue was and how you approached it.
Well, the issue, that was done my second year. First year, no major decisions, get the lay of the land, all right? And it emanated through my principal's advisory council, which is an advisory group for me with students and teachers from the various programs and departments and staff. And so, we, a teacher brought this up, they were very frustrated because a student had just disappeared from their classroom, was gone for a long period of time and then they were expected to come back and then get them up to speed and they were gone for like, I don't know, two, three weeks, right? And there was no policy, there was no, you know, you have to be in school, you know, and you have a certain amount of absences. So students could be gone for any number of days for any reason, right? There was no policy, you know, you have to be in school a certain amount and you have this many days, you can be absent, you know? And of course, you know, medical is different, that's a medical, you know, a medical need. And it was very simple to me and to the folks around the table, we need a policy. Has there ever been an attendance policy? And they said, no. And I said, well, you need one, you know, because otherwise you will have this. I mean, there's always a good reason why you, we can think of lots of good reasons why you need to be somewhere else and take a trip and do something that does have value, but, you know, welcome to school, you know? This is where we feel you need to be. And so, we decided after seven, seven absences, you would get an N, all right? You had seven absences a term, which is still very generous, twenty-one absences over the course of a year, but in any given term, seven absences and if you had more than that, it would trigger an N, that means no grade. Now, there was a grade behind it and if you receive two Ns in a course in a year, you'd have to repeat the course, you'd have to repeat the course. And, and that was, that was a shock to the system for the kids and for the parent community. Now, no one thinks about it, you know? But then, where there was nothing and then putting standard in place where we believe being in school is of value, all right? And that teachers work hard to provide an education for you and they're prioritizing your being here. And so, that was the process. For that, you know, I did write, you know, a note to the, a letter to the community, you know, saying that on such and such a date, the N rule would be in place. I had a parent forum, took questions about it. You know, a lot of folks wanted to know what it meant. It means that you have to be in school and we're putting a cap on the number of days barring a major illness or, you know, unforeseen circumstances that legitimates, you're not getting an N. And the superintendent was supportive, the school committee was supportive and said, you're going to get a lot of pushback. They didn't say no, but they said, you're going to get a lot of pushback. But the only thing that I did as a leader was I said, I think this is good for kids, they need to be here, all right? And there needs to be some accountability. And folks argued about it, didn't like it, but they did it, but they did it. Because, so that was, that was my process, you know, that's how that happened.
Let me follow that up. So let's take it a next step further, let's bring it in-house. There are some people in this community that have a problem with absenteeism when it comes to teachers and teachers being out for extended period of times. And yes, medical is, is one thing. Is there a process or is there a work rules that have been put in place, whether it be contractual or maybe known within the Weston school system when it comes to absenteeism for teachers?
Yeah, absenteeism for teachers, there is no contractual rules that I am aware of. But you trigger, you know, if we find out, you know, because periodically we will review the attendances and we will have a conversation with a department head or I will have a conversation with the teacher directly, you know, saying, no more absences, no more absences, you know? Because sometimes they're not all at once, but, you know, so you don't really notice it, it's sporadic or if a parent will complain or sometimes a student will complain. And so, it's never been so egregious where we had to take steps, disciplinary steps, but the expectation is clearly there that you're expected in the classroom, teaching your class more times than not. And if you trigger more than two or three days, it needs to be either an illness or something unforeseen. That is a clear expectation, all right? It's not contractual, but department heads and teachers, do you know that and understand that excessive absences is, can't be tolerated? And if there is something happening with them that may call for them to have more absences than would be expected, it is in the culture that they will either have a conversation with the department head or they will come to see me directly, saying, this is what I need and this is the circumstances, right? And so, so that's a clear expectation, clear expectation.
So we are getting short on time. We have two more questions left, but I feel like throughout the conversation that those have been addressed. I thought I'd open it up for a couple of minutes if you had any follow-ups to anything you've heard so far and then give Anthony a chance to give closing remarks if you would like to. Yes, Paul?
So, thank you, Anthony, for giving a little detail on the, on the June Academy. I'm very interested in that and I, what I heard you say was that there were, taking from various places in the budget to, to pay for that? Is that, so, so you were able to fund June Academy from a budget that was already approved? Or was there a fee-based component to it?
No, no, no fee-based component to it. So, you know, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
You know, I, I think students, students may have paid for, you know, the lifeguarding fee for the course that they took there, lifeguarding or there was a trip to Cuba and they had to pay some money for that. But no, you know, I didn't feel right, you know, we're going to redo the last two weeks of the school year in the regular curriculum and have all sorts of fun and sexy things. And by the way, it's fifty dollars, it's a hundred and fifty dollars or it's two hundred dollars and I didn't feel right doing that. So we, we funded it from two sources. Number one, our enrichment, our Weston Educational Enrichment Fund, they gave us fifteen thousand dollars, right? Because this is something that we could say was sponsored by Weave C, right? Good for us, good for them, right? And I took money from each department budget and I let them know that I was coming and I was going to do this. And so, based on the money that was in their account, I took money from each one, each one. To, we had an original line item of three thousand, four thousand dollars and we, we used that for transportation, for buses, so that teachers and kids could go on trips around. And so, I had the Weave C grant and I had, I took money from each department to make up that initial four thousand dollars that I devoted to, dedicated to transportation, and it worked well. And so, this year, and Weave C's committed a second year to it, but I think we can pay for it actually, you know, again, departments know that I'm, I'm coming, right? And that I'm taking money out of their budget and so, they're, they're expecting it and that's how we paid for it. And so, I didn't, you know, I will still go to Weave C because they're committed to it for two years, but I don't know if we'll need fifteen thousand dollars, right? And so, and teachers' budgets for this year were due last week and I haven't had a chance to review them. For their course, what is it that you need? What supplies and materials that you need that you can't already get within your department or what have you? And so, I haven't looked at those yet this year because the deadline just passed and so I'm going to review that and that's how I'll allocate the funds. That will determine how much I take from each department to pay for it.
I wanted to ask a follow-up to Bridget's question. You talked about some programs for students in the high needs category, but I'm wondering just in general, what is your view of the relationship between special education and regular education?
What is the relationship between, between them? Overall, you know, in my experience, it is good, but I will say that we've had to revisit some issues, you know, to see what are the expectations of, you know, how do, you know, teachers say, how do we go about meeting a student's I E P, right? Is the burden on us or is the burden on special education teachers? Who is the point person for my child's education, right? In my view, which is a shifting view, it's actually the general ed teacher because they are in your classroom, right? They're in your classroom. The special ed teacher is a liaison that can help work with you and the parent. If there are issues with the child or in the I E P, the parents shouldn't just hear from the special ed teacher, they should hear from the general ed teacher because they're in your class and the special ed teacher is there to support you and how to meet that student's I E P, I E P. So overall, it's good, but, you know, there's been a change in our, in our community about S P E D. And I remember a few years ago, there was a huge uproar in the community and we were left stunned about, you know, from kids on I E Ps and kids who, you know, were out of district, you know, and all these stories about how Weston was not meeting students' needs, you know, on I E Ps. And consider this, a few years ago, the district implemented nine programs in a year. I mean, who does that? All right, so we were playing catch-up, catch-up to some degree. And to really make, you know, the I E P process and how do you work with students with special needs as a general ed teacher? And in fact, we're planning some training around that this year, right? Because that's a, that's a convert, we have new faculty and new students with different needs and it's different from what, from years past, you know? And what is that relationship, right? And that's an ongoing conversation too, because as you have new people come in, you have to have the same conversation, the same expectations and training to, you know, this is the role of the gen, gen ed teacher, right? To fulfill a student's I E P and that will determine their relationship with the S P E D department. This is a collaborative one, but the goal is to support the child, but it's not all on the S P E D teacher, right? And so, that's something, I don't know how it is in, in A B, but that's something that we've, we've had to work with, you know? It's not all on the S P E D teacher, all right? It's also on the general ed teacher. That's a bit of a change, that's a bit of a change.
Okay, I'm gonna, I grabbed it from you, sorry. I, it doesn't look like there are any other follow-ups, so I'm gonna go ahead and if you want to say anything, just to wrap it up. And before you do that, I want to tell you how much I really appreciate you coming here and Anthony and I spent the day together running around and he went from one meeting after the other, after the other and not one complaint or misstep or expressed exhaustion, which I did like five times. So thank you for the, for that and I'll let you have the last word.
Well, I wanted to say, first of all, I hope I've answered your questions as clearly as I can and if those moments, if I wasn't clear, I apologize. I'm sure I will feel tired, but it was a good day. I had a good day. You're doing good work, right? Your students were articulate and engaging. Your teachers, you know, despite concerns and questions they had, I asked all, every group I was with, you know, what keeps you here? What keeps you here? Everyone had a clear answer to that question. It's a good place to teach and learn, right? And so, you should be proud of that, proud of that. And I thank you for welcoming me and hosting me for this day and however the decision goes, I've, I've learned, I've learned some things from the process and from the folks here. And so, I really appreciate the opportunity to get a sense of who you are and for you to get a sense of who I am, I am. So thank you, thank you, and good night.
So tomorrow night, we will be here again and I do believe that we have scheduled for a March 12th meeting to have a full discussion about everything that we hear over the next couple of days. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
All those in favor? Opposed or abstentions? Thank you, good night.